Good evening and welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. Please note that our meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we'll begin, as we do every meeting, with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. As we have a moment of silence today, I'd like to note that we had a fire here in downtown Westchester this morning, and sadly, someone lost their life as part of that, but please keep that in mind. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. With courtesy to everybody, please take a moment to silence yourself, or any other electronic device you have, which might ring or be thrown. Thank you. Copy of tonight's agenda and the entire information package with the council are available online on the city's website. We usually have some hard copies here for any guests who would like to have them, but I think most of you probably won't stay long. First, we'll be move on with our four presentations we have tonight. Please note that we have with us, as we frequently do, a representative from McDaniel College. President Julia Jaskin, when she took office as president of the college, promised that she would send someone frequently for our council meetings to let us know what's happening up on the hill and to take back information about what's happening down here in the city. So we're pleased to have Ms. Jill Santafani, here, the Director of Admissions at the college. Welcome to the meeting. Anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, actually, hi, everyone. So I know that very recently, the college hosted Julia, President Jaskin hosted a month or two since the break. And so I wanted to let you know that she and all the other college leaders said how much they'd do it having you all on campus, so if you'd be able to do that more frequently, and so very excited about that. You might notice that it's a little quieter in our end of West Main Street. Our students have officially gone, finals are over, and so it is a bit quieter. And the college will be closed between Christmas and New Year's. So in the event we should have some inclement weather, anyone who might come up and enjoy the campus should note that it is, our brown spur was off as well, so that might not necessarily be cleared. We actually will be welcoming our first-year students back a little bit earlier than the regular students because they have a course a day take in January, so for the first three weeks they'll be back, but it's only about 450 of our students. And so the remainder of our students will be arriving at the end of January, that final weekend, to start their spring semester. And I would be remiss if I didn't put a plug in, as the Dean of Admissions, to say that some of you may have or know students who are high school age coming of college age. I have a senior, so for the first time in my life, I am sitting in the parents' seat. So obviously, a lot of times, the hardest sell is for a student who's in the backyard, if you will. So we would love to invite students to the campus and certainly remind them that, you know, they have a lot of opportunities to be on campus for athletic events, prom pictures, homecoming, and things like that, but we would certainly love to have them there. And we actually do have a Carroll County grant for our students, so they are awarded that. We'd love to see them. And then the final announcement is just that many of you may know that St. John's hosts a Christmas Eve service on campus in Dick Baker Memorial Chapel, so that is happening again this year at one o'clock on Christmas Eve. So should you feel like you want to join, we would love to see you there.
Right, great, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Now we have four presentations, right? And I think the mayor has the opportunity to share some good tidings.
Yeah, so let me scoot over to the presentation Friday that we shared. Great, thank you. All right, so first of all, welcome, everyone, to our council meeting. So it's the season of the giving, so I'd like to kick off the meeting tonight with some various charitable contributions. The first contribution I'd like to award comes from the proceeds from a great Main Street event, the Westminster's Oyster Stroll, held annually on the second Saturday in October. The Oyster Stroll is designed to raise awareness about the importance of oyster aquaculture in the Chesapeake Bay. Participants are encouraged to stroll through downtown Westminster as they delight in fresh farm-raised oysters from the bay. If oysters aren't for you, there's still plenty of other things to enjoy, such as interactive children's activities, educational displays, giant yard games, delicious food, and a variety of artisan and craft vendors, samples of wine, spirits, and beer, and live music located throughout the stroll, part of one of my favorite events downtown. This great event wouldn't be possible without the city's outstanding partnership with the Coastal Conservation Association. So I'd like to ask Mike Whistle, Central Region Chapter Vice President of the Coastal Conservation Association, to please come to the front of the room. Hey, how are you?
Happy to be here.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Right, so on behalf of the city of Westminster, I'd like to present this chapter for $2,000. In recognition of the Chesapeake Conservation Association volunteer support of the Oyster Stroll. Sorry. Take that, I do apologize.
Just one moment. Eric Scoop. We do like your helmet.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would, and I thank you very much, and I always thank the city for their help in the recoup park, for Abby and her team. We came together to do this quite a few years ago, and it's been a pretty big success, I think. Seven, some odd thousand people come out, so I think that's a pretty reasonable success. But it also helps with the education and the awareness, and what we can do even here in Carroll County for marine conservation. And part of what our group does is to help teach elementary school children the importance of oysters and what their ecological impact is in the bay. And if your child, if your children have ever gone through the curriculum, there's maybe a good chance that they've helped build reef walls, which are artificial reefs that actually, they do in their fourth grade through a three- or four-day period, and then will eventually get into going to the bay to build new life in the bay. So they're getting hands-on experience, and they're seeing, you know, some of their work go literally to improve their base health. So we appreciate the opportunities, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks for your, we've had the volunteers, right? We wouldn't be able to have that event.
Total volunteer organization, yeah.
Yep, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, so up next. It's my pleasure to present four very deserving community organizations within nation checks for their effort in coordinating and running multiple facets of Fall Fest 2022. For those who may not know, Fall Fest has been around since 1978. It's an annual four-day event held in Westminster City Park and the adjacent Longwell Parking Lot. For many, Fall Fest has become a tradition that symbolizes the end of summer. The festival helps attendees usher in and celebrate the cooler, more colorful fall days. With visitation reaching approximately 30,000 people, Fall Fest would not be possible without our charity partners' dedication and volunteer support. Four nonprofit partners are selected through an application and interview process in January. Once selected, the charity partners are tasked with various event-related details and due dates. Partners must attend monthly meetings to discuss progress, challenges, and triumphs, all while they recruit and schedule eight volunteers an hour for every hour Fall Fest operates. This evening, the charity partners receiving donation checks for Catholic Charities Head Start, Crossroads Church, Together We Own It, and the Westminster Municipal Band. At this point in time, I'd like to invite the following individuals to the front of the room. Vernice Williams, E.R.S.E.A. Coordinator for Catholic Charities Head Start. Beth Pruitt, Westminster Campus Advisor, Crossroads Church. Katie Spear, Executive Director, Together We Own It. And Kay Smith, Financial Guru, Westchester Municipal Band. Since the amount you receive tonight is a surprise, we're going to hand you your checks backwards, right? So don't look, right? Just hold them next to you like this. Once everyone has their checks, on the count of three, you can flip them over to reveal the amount.
It's surprising.
Yes. You ready? Right, one, two, three. Do some, you want to, Mr. Brown was smart and learning. We learn quick. Yeah, yeah, don't just stay there. I'll block Mr. Barber. So you may notice that the Municipal Band received a higher donation. This is because the final day of Fall Fest got rained out, except for the rides, which is the area of Fall Fest that the band is in charge of running. While everyone else got to retreat from the rain, the band marched on, dodging raindrops and selling tickets, until 6:00 p.m. on the final day of Fall Fest. With all that said, all of you did a tremendous job making this event a cherished community tradition. A big thank you to all of you for your dedication and hard work, and your partnership is priceless. Would anyone like to say something on behalf of your organization? We can start down at the end there.
So I'm Beth from Crossroads Church, and it was just such a pleasure. Like, our goal is just to be involved in the community, and this was just such a great way to do it. And we just, at our last meeting, I just shared so many different stories of people that we met, and just great connections, and we just hope to do it again, if you'll have us. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Erin Neath, and I'm from Associated Catholic Charities Head Start and Front End Head Start. And I just want to say thanks for having us in your city, and if you know any children that need spring education, six weeks to five years old, so I'm in the head.
Yeah, even Together We Own It, since I'm there, you're doing this, and we're just really grateful to be a part of it. As a grassroots nonprofit, this goes a long way, and so we're super grateful for this, to be able to provide new opportunities for kids in our programs, and just grateful to the city for having us again.
Thank you. And I'm okay with the Westminster band, and we want to just thank you and the Catholic band for giving us this opportunity.
And I know I already went. The only one. Big part of all of this, too, is to put this money back into the city, so we have a lot of different things we're going to do.
On behalf of the council, right, we'd just like to say thank you for making Fall Fest 2022 the huge success that it was, and it would not be possible without any of your support, so we do appreciate that.
Congratulations to all of you, you do not need to play.
No, you do not need to play.
Although you're welcome.
Last but not least, right, it is my pleasure to announce, I mean. Oh, sorry. Are you ready? Okay, sorry, just a minute. Awkward silence again.
Are we going to start giving out checks at every meeting now? No, 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 it's cool, I like it.
We do it all at once.
A lot of people come.
All right, okay, so lastly, it is my pleasure to announce the winners of the 2022 Marathon Main Street Electric Holiday Day Parade. A panel of three judges consisting of local business owners assess each parade entry on theme, detail, and brightness in the following categories. Best and brightest, spirit of the season, and Main Street champion. All winners receive a trophy and a $100 gift card. First, I would like to recognize Andy Wetzel, Maintenance Department, sorry, Maintenance Mechanic, and Dave Str, sorry, Dave Strubig, Director of Maintenance and Facilities from Shelter Systems Limited, for winning entry that earned the award for bright and best, or best and brightest. Yeah.
I'm scared, Erin. Thanks.
Great, there you go. Congratulations. Thanks for being here.
It was fun, it was a blast. Can't wait till next year.
The next award goes to Les Deets, owner of A Quality Heating and Air Conditioning for his entry that best reflected the spirit of the season. This was the one with the air conditioner, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to recognize the Carroll County Veterinary Clinic as the Main Street champion, expecting, sorry, accepting tonight, we have Lynn Wimmer, owner, and Abby Wimmer, veterinary technician. Full disclosure, this is where my cats go. I just got an appointment reminder today, surprisingly, so congratulations, thank you so much for being in the break. Thank you, thank you.
Everybody have a good holiday?
A big thank you to all of our 2022 parade entries for creativity, time, and attention to detail to make this a proud Westminster tradition. The Miracle Main Street Electric Holiday Day Parade could not exist without your support and participation. And speaking on support behalf of the city, I'd like to extend our sincerest gratitude to Mark Degrasperi, owner of Interstate Battery, for his steadfast support of this phenomenal community event. Interstate Battery provides power sources for all electric parade entries. The Interstate Battery staff are members available onsite at the parade lineup and disbandament to help safely illuminate and break down the floats. We have more.
But wait, there's more.
Oh, that's, oh, good. What? Okay. I'm done. The Mayor's Cup, I know, I don't have any.
Now it's not, I don't know what's.
Go through. Oh, okay, here we go. Just ignore my reading from the computer here. All right, so now we get to the Main Street awards. Before we start, Main Street this year, I think, looks fantastic, and in no small part to our businesses that have helped decorate Main Street. I think I've heard nothing but really phenomenal things about everything on Main Street this year as far as the lights that the city has put out, the decorations and the window fronts. Individuals have said, you know, we've come out for dinner in Westminster, and then we walked up and down Main Street to look at the window displays, so thank you very much. So the Mayor's Cup is a longstanding contest that recognizes the decorative storefronts and windows of downtown Westminster businesses on display during the holiday season. Displays are recognized for several holiday-based themes, and the Mayor's Cup is awarded to the business with the best overall display. The Mayor's Cup is engraved with the names of the winning business each year and proudly displayed at the winning business's location. This year, 10 businesses offered eye-grabbing entries, and as always, it was difficult to select a winner. First, I would like to recognize business winners of the holiday-based theme award. Best brightest display, Flowers by Evelyn at 91 and 1/2 East Main Street. Best window display, Iron Valley Real Estate of Central Maryland. Best kid friendly Westminster new and used furniture at 31 West Main Street. Best festive sterling water, sterling quality water at 7 East Main. The Mayor's Cup Award for the best overall display is awarded to Heart Made Collective at 10 East Main Street. So what I like best, the display, I don't know if you, it sits back a little bit, but when you drive by the Christmas tree on the second floor, it's fantastic. Let you hold it, because I hold it, and I block you.
Oh.
Right. So the council would like to thank everybody, sorry, we're going to get a little bit. The council would like to thank everyone for their decorating efforts, and the windows and storefronts certainly captured the spirit of the holidays and beautified downtown Westminster. So thank you very much for taking part in that, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great, Mrs. Nichols. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, you may, you please don't feel that you're going to lose that.
Look at Sam, like, he'll help you get it for a year. Thank you, thank you.
Move on now, we'll, for Monday, there's a meeting, approval of the minutes. We have minutes for the meeting of the Mayor and Common Council on November 28, as well as a special meeting of the Mayor and Common Council on December 10. And have a motion to approve the minutes.
No, but.
Then a motion by, you know, a motion by Ms. Gilbert, and a second by Mr. Clark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, and the motion is, the motion is adopted. And we have several mayoral appointments tonight. We'll begin with Board of Zoning Appeals. We have appointed by the mayor to appoint Scott Graff to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term ending on December 12, 2025. We have a motion to accept the mayor's nomination.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, and Mr. Graff is appointed. We have an appointment by the mayor of Mr. Robert Peoples Jr. to the City of Westminster's Board of Elections as a member for the term ending on February 14, 2023. We will then, you know, because the current term ends, and then we'll, you know, we'll take these up again early in the year and extend this. They have a motion to appoint to accept the mayor's nomination of Mr. Peoples.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Mr. Cavati, and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, and Mr. Peoples is appointed. We have a motion likewise, same way, for the Board of Elections for a term ending on February 14, to Mr. Jay Brook Flaherty for the Board of Elections, and they have a motion.
So the second.
And a motion by Mr. Hoff, and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, and Mr. Flaherty is confirmed. And finally, we have an appointment by the mayor of Ms. Erin Joffre to the City of Westminster's Board of Ethics Commission, and remember, for a five-year term ending on December 12, 2027. They have a motion. Then a motion by Ms. Gilbert to accept the mayor's appointment.
I second it.
And a second by Mr. Dayhoff, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have the ayes have it, and the appointment is confirmed.
Mr. President, just a question. So the Board of Zoning Appeals was a three-year term, right?
I believe that's correct, it's a three-year term.
Ethics is five years?
That's right.
Okay, this is a different, okay, gotcha.
All of you.
Okay, no problem.
Right, it's quite a light.
Yes, there.
All right, we will now to report, I mean, next I need to report for the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Great, thank you, Council President Pereira. I just wanted to echo your comments earlier today about the fire that occurred on Main Street, where unfortunately, a resident of the city lost their life this morning. A tragedy in any circumstance, but, you know, I can't imagine during the holiday season as well, and things like that, so. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all the first responders who showed up with the fire department. I know fire departments from Southern Pennsylvania and around Carroll County came into town this morning, and as well, the Westminster Police Department, who was on scene directing traffic and helping with things there as well. So this thank you to all the first responders that we rely on all the times of the year in the area. So I also want to say thank you to the council for approving my appointments to the boards of commissions. I would also like to just state, excuse me, that we're still looking for other members to serve on various boards and commissions, so there's an application link that is on the website that you can access to do that. We have openings on several of our boards this time. On December 5, that was last Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with a bunch of Cub Scouts at Deer Park United Methodist Church. We had a great conversation about what it was like to be the mayor and the mayor of Westminster. We talked about all sorts of different things. They wanted to know what I found hard about the role and what I most enjoyed about the role, and then we quickly got into questions about my favorite farm animals and whether or not I have a part of closed school, which, do you ever get questions like that, Mr. Governor?
Never.
All the time. Can you close school for us? No. So, but that was always enjoyable. I spent about 45 minutes with the Boy Scouts, sorry, the Cub Scouts that evening. On Saturday, I wandered downtown for the holiday concert in the library lawn, had a great afternoon listening to the Westminster Elementary Band play a few holiday tunes, the Westminster High School Jazz Band played as well. You know, afterwards, we had the music on Main Street. There were people taking carriage rides around the area. I know the lights were on in City Parks this weekend, and once again, I know I've said it before, I think we also said it at the last meeting. Nothing but wonderful things about the city this holiday season, which is due in large part to all of the city staff that have worked incredibly hard to have the city looking the way it does. I think I'll end with that, Mr. President, thank you.
And maybe some, some questions about your favorite partner, your favorite villain?
It would be a horse, probably, yeah. Oh, sorry, one more thing, just a quick one. I didn't mention it last time, I was invited to serve on West Moore's transition team as he becomes, will be inaugurated as our next governor in January, and I'm serving on the Water Subcommittee for the Climate and Energy Policy Executive Policy Committee, which I think will be helpful with our water recycling, so we have that going underway as well.
Very, very enjoyable. That's great, congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to, you went for the stick, great. Thank you, Dr. Becker. We'll move on now to report from standing committees. We'll begin, as we always do, with our liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council. And I just want to say, some people may wonder why we have a liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council. The reason is because we host the Carroll County Arts Council and city-owned, the old Carroll Theater, city-owned building, and I've done so now since, since moving to that property. Mr. Dayhoff.
And you and I said it on the council when we did that, that we agreed, but very successful. We talked to Governor Glenn Denning down at the Avalon Theater in East, and he led the conversation. And it's a success model that has been tried to, many municipalities throughout the state have tried to duplicate, but a lot of people are not aware of it, and the Arts Council constantly thinks the praises of the Streets Department and the Public Works Department as the, how much you helped them, and that's, that's a real valuable partnership. Lots of really good programming at the Arts Council. Check the website for much more information. The Festival of Reeds was a great success, and we really appreciate all the folks that bring, that the Arts Council brings into town. I call it the art of economic development. Thank you, Mr. President, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. And Mr. Hoff, please report on the economic and community development.
Mr. President, I do not have anything to report at the time.
All right, thank you very much. We had a meeting of the Finance Committee last week, in which we Uh, we had a meeting of the Finance Committee, uh, last week, uh, in which we, uh, amongst other things, discussed, uh, a budget amendment, uh, which will be coming your way shortly, uh, it's, um, getting a few twi- final tweaks from the staff to resolve a couple of issues, and, uh, we expect to see a, um, updated version of that in January. Personal committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I don't have too much, other than just to make the public aware that we have numerous positions still open, um, Westminster City. We have a great, amazing team of folks that you could join, um, great benefits, terrific leadership, so check out our website, descriptions and applications, that's all I have.
Yeah, very good. Um, and, uh, Mr. Kavachi, Policy Committee.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, on November twenty ninth, Donovan Smallwood was charged by the Westminster Police Department with ten fitness center burglary and related malicious destruction of property incidents. He pled guilty to both and received seventy days incarceration and two years of supervised probation with the addition of making financial restitution for damage. On December first, Edward Crocker, who was charged, was, uh, who was charged by Westminster Police Department detectives with embezzlement of approximately six hundred and forty thousand dollars, a lot of money, from his elderly aunt. He was found guilty and received one year of incarceration and five years of supervised probation, and, uh, also, uh, is, um, demanded, uh, is, is, uh, yes, pay restitution of the money, yeah, that chance, that's probably. Um, on December first, also, members of the Westminster Police Department participated in the annual Catherine's Cause and Trump Driving Event at the Ascension Episcopal Church. Catherine's Cause is an annual remembered ceremony in honor of the lives lost on Carroll County roads each year. On December fourth, Michael Holland, who was charged by Westminster Police Department detectives for the New Windsor State Bank robberies on, both September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and, um, I'm sorry, the New Windsor State Bank robbery on, on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and a Farm and the Panic bank robbery on October seventh of twenty twenty-one. He pled guilty and was sentenced to ten years incarceration and five years of supervised probation, and this, in addition to making financial restitution. Uh, before I go on to the last couple of things that are fieldwork and stuff, I, I think this, you know, all of that above just goes one more time to show that the, you know, our detectives and police officers, and of course, all under the two diligent chief, they've done an amazing job. I mean, the bank robber, he got ten years, my, I believe that's the one where he's been doing it, and other, other locations had trouble catching him, and, and our guys did. Um, and, you know, that, 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 uh, six hundred and forty thousand dollar, uh, you know, the, uh, that their bank stole from his elderly aunt. Now, that, that's one of those crimes where, I think, in a lot of places, a lot of departments just would not probably put the time and effort into bringing that to justice, and I'm, I'm proud of our department, as I know we all are, for making something like that happen. Um, it's terrible. Okay, so, uh, two more items, on December fifth, Chief Ledwell attended the first Carroll County Police Accountability Board meeting where he provided an overview of the Westminster Police Department, their operations and policies. On December tenth, the Westminster Police Department participated in their twentieth annual Shop with a Cop event at the Westminster Walmart with ten local children and their families. The event provides a bonding experience between local children and our police officers. It also provides families in need with the ability to have a wonderful holiday celebration for their children, and for that, I know all of us sitting here at this day is greatly appreciative of that chief, so thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi, and can you give us a report on the Public Works Committee as well?
I can, it'll be much breather. The Streets Department has finished up with the leaf collection as of Friday, December ninth. Believe me, I put that machine to, uh, to use a number of times over the past few weeks, and all the equipment is prepared for the upcoming snow season, let's hope that it just sits there and doesn't do a whole lot.
Yes.
The Utilities Department remitted, also a lot of money.
I know, but.
The Utilities Department remitted.
Says I can have it as long as it's not a weekend.
Or at night.
President, can you please give the cause maybe?
My bad.
The Utilities Department remedied a sinkhole of approximately ten feet deep that developed at the Wakefield Valley Park. The sinkhole was located at the edges of Pop's Branch, near the bridge at Old New Windsor Road. So thank you for doing that, that's quite a big sinkhole. That is all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kavachi, um, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
We had a, uh, short but very good meeting, um, just recently, and we will be looking forward to, uh, uh, bringing a number of the discussions, um, to the council, um, into their future, thank you.
Right, thank you, um, and, uh, just, you look for the Technology Committee, your meeting schedule, uh, on January twenty-fourth. Thank you. Um, uh, council comments and spec, this will be often, if you remember the council, uh, to, uh, uh, share anything they would like to that is, uh, not elsewhere on the agenda, uh, or was not in their community report. Do you want Mr. Kavachi?
Yeah, Mr. President, I am terrible with this, I had asked Councilman Dayhoff to, uh, in part of the public safety report, um, and I neglected to do that, so if I could, I'd like to yield some time over to him to talk about this morning's incident, I know the mayor already mentioned it, but, uh, it, I think it's appropriate for us, since it happened in the city, to talk a little bit more in detail in terms of what happened, and instead of me giving that report, I asked Councilman Dayhoff if he would do it, given his position on the fire department, so. So, okay, Mr. President, can I yield a little time to him?
Uh, we'll, we'll be going to him in just a minute.
Okay, well, there's, there's that, there you go. That's it, all that happened.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Um, what a lot of folks don't understand about an incident that we had this morning was the, um, the intercooperation that we have with so many different agencies. Um, and we also mentioned that the Police Department, um, directed traffic. Well, the Police Department play a key and critical role in the investigation of the fire also. Um, and I, I, many of the Maryland State Fire Marshals are personal friends of mine, and I know how highly they, um, they keep the Westminster Police Department, the members at the Gate of Services, uh, very high regard throughout the state, so, uh, we really appreciate that. Um, this is the second fire fatality to have occurred in Carroll County, uh, in recent weeks. Um, on November twenty-seventh, a gentleman lost his life in a fire just north of Westminster, a little sound bike, and it sort of, um, it sort of emphasizes the importance of fire safety. This is a really, really busy time of the year, and, and things happen, and, uh, we need to be extra vigilant, um, because not only are we sad about the loss of our shopkeeper in town, but he leaves a family behind, and he leaves friends behind, and he leaves a community in mourning, and, um, it's very, very sad. Not only that, we got a firefighter that was taken to the hospital this morning, and I visited him, uh, I visited with him, uh, just a little bit before the council meeting, um, and, uh, he's doing well, but he is be, he is being admitted, we had one, we had over one hundred firefighters, um, on the scene. Um, just because the fire was called in at five eighteen and the fire was declared under control at six thirty-four, but it was, the Westminster Fire Department and Carroll County Fire Departments are held in very high regard throughout, uh, the state of Maryland. I mean, they're our neighbors and they're our friends, and, you know, some of them are goofy like me, maybe perhaps, but, uh, but, uh, they are extremely capable and competent, and, uh, the fire was, was a, a pretty much a textbook, uh, case, and, and putting out, um, a fire in the middle of a block, in the middle of a number of buildings. The one big thing that helped with, with this fire was that eighteen ninety-five building has, uh, was, has been retrofitted with a sprinkler system. And the sprinkler system, we evacuated thirty people out the back of that building, out of the second and the third floors, which was not easily accomplished, and the sprinkler systems, no doubt, saved lives. Uh, the sprinkler system put the fire out pretty quickly. Um, I also want to be sure to mention, in addition to recognizing all of the various agencies that come together and work very closely together on these, um, on these, on these events, um, Chick-fil-A just kept donating food. Um, every time I went over to Chick-fil-A, they wouldn't let us pay for the food, and we, we must have hold a hundred and twenty sandwiches out of Chick-fil-A, and they, they wouldn't take any money whatsoever. Um, the fire remains under investigation. Um, it just is a really good opportunity to, once again, um, reminds people of firefighting. We mentioned Catherine's Cause earlier today. Um, I always, I often like to put up on Facebook that, um, if you don't drink and drive, your dog won't understand why you didn't come home. But I do death notifications, and they're very, very difficult, and when you, when, when you drink and drive, or, um, when, when, when a, when a, when a fire takes place, um, it's, it's very difficult, it leaves, it leaves behind a lot of very upset folks, so I just can't emphasize enough, uh, the role of fire safety. And I really appreciate, Mr. President, and Mr. Kavachi, this opportunity to try and, and take one more opportunity to, to get this message across. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, the, I have a couple things, um, the MML, uh, quarterly meeting was this past Thursday evening. I just wanted to make, um, everyone on council aware, and, um, the community that, um, January eleventh, um, will be the opening day for legislative reception in Annapolis from six to eight, and if nobody wants to drive all the way down to Annapolis, then they get to have a, uh, chance to, uh, meet with and talk with our county delegation meeting, which will be January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the Reagan Room at the County Office Building at three o'clock. Um, as far as December, um, I want to remind everybody that Reeds Across America will be this Saturday at, on the seventeenth. Each December, um, National Reeds Across America Day, it's, um, the mission is to remember, honor, and teach, and that is carried out by coordinating reed laying ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as more than three thousand and four hundred additional locations in the United States, at sea and abroad. And we, in Westminster and Carroll County, have several locations here, um, if anybody wants to take part in the ceremony, you can, I'll babble involved, or you can check out the, um, Reeds Across America website for a ceremony, um, that's happening here in Carroll County area. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Hoff.
Mr. President, um, as, uh, as you know, sir, um, I tend to walk, uh, in the mornings, uh-huh, if you've seen me out and about, and I often walk, um, along Main Street, and when you're walking with your headsets on, especially in the mornings, it's not too busy, I kind of look at all the various buildings, uh, through our Main Street area. And, uh, when I first heard about the fire, um, obviously, I, you know, devastated that, to hear that Mr. Way passed. Um, but that is a beautiful building, has one of the most attractive façades, I would argue, in downtown Main Street. Um, so I will say, I was relieved when I was walking this morning and saw that the fire was under control, and while I, I certainly, Mr. Dayhoff, you know, know there's, uh, some significant damage inside, um, the fact that the building is still standing and obviously, uh, looks to be, you know, definitely repairable, um, is a really good thing for Main Street in the long run, because it would be, uh, quite a loss for Main Street to lose a building of, of that significance, uh, in town. Um, so, I, I'm, I'm pleased about that, uh, even though it's, um, you know, devastating that someone had passed. Um, and then the only other, uh, thing I want to ma- uh, say is this is my first, uh, full calendar year on city council, and, um, I just appreciate serving with all of you, and I want to wish everybody, staff included, uh, a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, um, so, thank you very much.
Right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. I don't, I have anything to add to all that, we move on to, um, we have two bids tonight. Uh, the first is the award for con- the contract for inflow and infiltration phase five. That's, um, appropriate to Mayor, for Mayor Dominic, it's one of his favorite projects. Uh, and for that, we'll turn to the Deputy Director of Public Works, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. The current capital project, sewer fund, includes funding for the continuation of the river infiltration work in the sewer collection system. Project was advertised on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, on E and then A, with pre-bid meeting and due dates on November third, twenty twenty-two, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, respect for it. The city received one bid from Guyer Brothers Inc., the successful phase four contractor, in the amount of one million, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. City staff has reviewed and evaluated the references, and they from Guyer Brothers Inc. finds it to be acceptable with regards to the city's needs, and is also satisfied with the phase four work product obtained in the previous contract. The applied twenty-three budget for this project is one million dollars. The budget amendment will be needed in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Staff recommends that the Mayor Common Council accept the bid and award the contract for the I and I phase five project, the Guyer Brothers Inc. of New Enterprise P A, in the amount of one million, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents for the infiltration and filtration work.
Right, thank you, Mr. Day. We have a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, any questions from Mr. Day, or comments?
Mr. President. With Kavachi. Uh, it's probably, maybe not Mr. Day, it might be Ms. Simons, um, or my name's correct, or, um, where's the twenty-six thousand coming out of my question to you?
I am looking. It is coming out of, it is coming out of sewer fund restricted fund balance, which is from the benefit assessment calculation in the sewer fund. So no new city money, no city reserves.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. President, thank you, Ms. Simons.
And thank you, anyone else, Mr. President, Mr. Dayhoff?
It is appropriate that we recognize, uh, Mayor Dominic for his leadership in helping bring that forward. I know you mentioned it, but I think it's important that the public be aware that we transit. We have solid transitions on his initiatives from, from one administration to another, and I really appreciate the initiative. I think it's going to save us one heck of a lot of money down the road, it really is, a lot of water, and a lot of water, a, a lot of water. Um, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, anyone else wish to report? Alright, here you go, anyone else, move on to the vote, all those in favor, we're approving the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
When opposed, say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the contract is approved. Um, next item is approval of change order number one to the city's contract with Midlandic Utilities Incorporated with a valve bolt replacement project. We're back to Mr. Dick again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certain water distribution system valves in the late nineteen nineties through two thousand and seven have been found to have substandard bonnet bolt failures. Unfortunately, bonnet bolt failure due to corrosion can result in catastrophic valve failure, followed by a tremendous release of water. The city's distribution system contains quite a number of these valves that fit the substandard criteria. In addition, higher pressure areas in the system exert more stress on the bonnet bolts than lower pressure areas, and as a result, they are more likely to fail and accelerate the grade. On September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the Mayor Common Council accepted the bid of Midlandic Utilities Inc. of Cardale, Pennsylvania, and authorized the mayor's execution of the associated contract in the not-too-exceed amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the valve bolt replacement project. During the replacement of the valves, in the field conditions, changed the quantities of valves. Quantity of eight-inch valves reduced by one for a credit of two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Quantity of six-inch valves increased by two for an increase of five thousand, five hundred and seventy. This resulted in a two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollar increase in total cost. The increase of the two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the project will be funded by the Water Maintenance Budget. The staff recommends that the Com- Common Council approve change order number one to the city's contracted Midlandic Utilities and authorize the execution of the change order number one by the mayor.
Right, thank you, Mr. Dick, we have a motion to approve the, um, change order.
I'll move, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Kabachi.
The motion by Mr. Cavaci and the second by Mr. Pop. Thank you. Um, any questions for Mr. Dick or any comments? Um, I have one for the others. I'm sorry, I know I'm just bad meeting. I wasn't here, I would have asked, I presume. But because it was so long ago, uh, even though the, the bolts were substandard, there's no one to go back after, um.
Yeah, that's been a question I've been asking myself, uh, as far as I know, no manufacturer has been able to respond to that. All right, thank you.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the change order, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and change order is approved. Uh, that concludes the bids. We have, the next item is unfinished business. There's no unfinished business, of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business to report? Hearing none, move on to new business. Um, we have four items under new business. The first is approval of sole source contract with Funken Bolton P A. Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, sir. The city of Westminster seeks to utilize the services of Funken Bolton P A located in Baltimore, Maryland, to engage with and represent the city in matters of, I think, Maryland, plus here. Uh, this expense can be absorbed in the fiscal year twenty-three general fund operating budget. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council authorize a sole source contract with Funken Bolton P A in the amount of three thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, Ms. Imholtz. May I have a motion to approve this item?
Somebody, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Pop and the second by Ms. Gilbert. Thank you. Any questions or any requirements? Hearing none, we want to vote. All those in favor of approving the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the contract is approved. Next item is approval of purchase of one replacement police vehicle, a twenty-twenty-two Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicle under the Maryland statewide contract from Hertford Fleet Services for a total cost thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Sounds like a pretty good price. Keep that low.
Good evening, Mayor Council. On November second, twenty twenty-two, Sergeant Timmy Delasper was involved in not at fault collision with another passenger vehicle, resulting in a total loss of a twenty-eighteen Ford Police Interceptor all-wheel-drive police cruiser. As a result, the city received an insurance check in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Hertford Fleet Services Incorporated, Melford, Delaware, currently has one twenty-twenty-two Dodge Durango Police Pursuit Vehicle all-wheel-drive in stock that is available under the Maryland state contract for a total cost of thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Kelly Blue Book Fair Market range to purchase this vehicle is forty thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. A new Ford Police Interceptor all-wheel-drive SUV is not available yet uh, for us, but, uh, is being priced on the state contracts at around forty-eight thousand dollars right now. This would require a budget amendment in the amount of the difference, which is ten thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Staff recommends that the common council approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-two Dodge Durango Pursuit Vehicle all-wheel-drive from Hertford Fleet Services for a total cost of thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Right, thank you, Chief. May I have a motion on the purchase of the vehicle?
Don't move, Mr. President.
The motion to approve by Mr. Cavaci, seconded by Ms. Gilbert. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we want to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and Chief, get your vehicle.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item is approval of the police salary step plan. Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, sir. To remain competitive with the recruitment and retention in the local police officer employment market, I have prepared the proposed update to the police salary step plan. This update predominantly seeks to increase the police pay scale steps at the rank of police officer. Police corporal positions would receive the next highest increase. Sergeant, lieutenant and captain positions would receive a minor increase in salary. This adjustment should reduce our employee attrition expenses. Attrition costs include applicant hiring expenses, such as psychological evaluations, written test purchases, background investigations, physical fitness appointments, drug screenings and staff time. Attrition expenses also include police academy costs, such as tuition, training equipment and uniforms, as well as the police recruit salary while attending the police academy. Funding for these changes will be absorbed from the fiscal year twenty-three operating budget for the police department for redistribution of funds. I recommend that the, the mayor and common council approve the proposed police salaries plan.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Um, may I have a motion on approval of the plan?
Don't move, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Cavaci, is there a second?
I'll second.
And the second by Mr. Pop. Any discussion or any questions? Well, I think we've all been briefed on it. Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the, um, police salary step plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the, uh, one new plan is approved. Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. And, uh, Mr. Cavaci, I think you have a motion for us on approval.
I do, Mr. President. I'd like to move that the common council adjourn to a closed meeting at the conclusion of the mayor and common council meeting of Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with the general provisions of the article of the annotated code of parallel three, N S three oh five B subsection one, discuss the appointment, deployment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals, and section B subsection seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. And I believe the date was wrong on that. That would be tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Which is, which is, uh, yeah. The I, oh, that's right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Mr. Pop. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and we will go to a closed meeting at the conclusion of the regular meeting. Now it's time for departmental reports. You lead us through that, and we'll go to our city. Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will start tonight with the fire report.
Um. Wanted to report on a good note that the, um, the Westminster Fire Department sent a detail, this taking up the fix this week, um, look for stand-up visiting, um, a neighborhood near the use center. And that'll be my report. Thank you, Ms. Imholtz.
Well, is it coming to great interest?
It's very nice.
I'm here.
Well, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's time.
I think last year it was.
Well, maybe I tend to take a look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Pop.
Because I, I, I often, I often. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Imholtz.
Thank you, sir. I just want to take a moment to wish the mayor council and city staff happy holidays. I'm grateful for another year that we've had together. We have just a short, uh, list of reports for you. We will start out with the Recreation and Parks Department, Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Uh, just a short report this evening. I'd like to remind everyone to please stop by for our last Saturday visit with Santa on the library lawn from noon to four. On the seventeenth, we have to get him back to the North Pole. He has some important work to do. So I believe he's on, uh, on the fire trucks tonight. He'll be back at the library on Saturday, and then it's off to the North Pole after this Saturday. So noon to four, library lawn. Come out and visit Santa and enjoy our last Saturday of free horse-drawn carriage rides as well. And, um, other than that, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays and thank you for another fantastic year at the city of Westminster. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Public Works Department. Mr. Dick.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Uh, just start by wishing everybody have a holidays. Um, just to piggyback real quick, it's kind of fill in line here with, uh, the change order we just did. Last Friday, we had a, we responded to the Water Main Break at Jenny and Bridgemore at the corner. Um, as we got there and dug it up, ended up being one of these bonds come apart due to, due to the bolts. Um, while we were there, at the hole, then we replaced all three valves, uh, bolts, and one valve, so. Just to say that, that, I mean, that we spend every year for these valve bolts. It's definitely, uh, needed. Um, and that's all really important.
Are there any questions for the Public Works Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Department.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Good evening, um, mayor and council. Um, just wanted to, uh, let you know that the audit is still ongoing. I reported that a few weeks ago. They'll be back out on site, um, this Wednesday and Thursday. And, um, a reminder too, that right after the holidays, we'll be starting in our budget process. So, uh, we'll be switching gears then, so, um, wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and just it's been a lot of fun so far. So glad to be here and glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
We are certainly glad that you are here. I'll, I'll leave that, I'll leave that charge. Are there any questions for the Finance Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the H R Department, Ms. McCollum.
Good evening. Um, the Human Resources Department, we are continuing to recruit across all departments, um, for various positions. Um, we've also had some recent, um, staff promotions in the Public Works Department. And, uh, just a reminder, uh, the staff holiday luncheon is Friday, December sixteenth. That completes my report.
Are there any questions for the Human Resources Department?
Ms. Imholtz.
Yes.
I just have a, a curiosity question. Have we seen any change over the year as far as the number of applications we're getting in, or is it still kind of similar as far as the, the vibe, as far as being difficult to find people for positions?
It's very dependent on the position. So some positions, we continue to struggle to get applicants at all, let alone applicants that have any experience in that particular job. Um, and then some positions are flooded with applications of people that are very qualified for the job. So we have a long list of good candidates to look at, so.
It's very position dependent, okay?
Does seem to be just position dependent, yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. McCollough, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, just to, um, to add, um, we also look at, uh, different recruitments, because sometimes within those recruitments, there are applications that we can pull for other vacancies, because the experience is there. So, um, an eye goes out across all the applications that we receive and to see if we can, um, utilize those applications in other departments.
Oh, good. You, you all do do that. Because I know some, I will mention too, they don't do, they don't do that, and they, you have to apply for that position, but I think it's smart that somebody couldn't be applied for one position, but they could be better positioned for another position.
Exactly, yes.
Great. Good to know you guys do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCollough. That's actually how I got my first job in Maryland, is I applied for one and they were like, oh, you're much better over here for this one, so. Thank you. It's a good, it's smart. Thank you, Ms. McCollough. Any other questions for, let's move on to Planning Department.
Thank you. Good evening and happy holidays, everyone. Um, on December seventh, the Historic District Commission provided a cursory review of the proposed Amy's Laundry Edition located two seventy-three East Main Street. This addition is going to the backside of the building on the Winter Street side. Uh, simplified site plan, S S twenty-two oh eight, for Amy's Laundry Edition is currently under review, and it's anticipated that it will be approved shortly. Uh, this Saturday, December seventeenth, is the last Saturday for the holiday market, which opens at nine AM to one PM. So stop by the market and go see Santa. And this is the last, last Saturday that next to each other, so you can wrap it all together. Um, the Small Business Saturday Passport Program ended on Sunday, December the eleventh. The passports must be turned in by tomorrow, Tuesday, December thirteenth, to any Carroll County Library or administrative building or a city hall um, of any one of the eight participating municipalities. On Friday, December sixteenth, at ten AM, the twenty winners will be selected to receive a fifty-dollar gift certificate, which can be used at any one of the participating businesses in any one of the eight municipalities. You can view, you can view this drawing of the winners on the Carroll County Downtown's Facebook page. So if you want to see, if your name gets picked, tune in. If not, we will contact the winner, so you don't have to watch if you can't make it. So that completes my report.
Are there any questions for Planning Department?
I have one. Um, do you have any sense of what A, uh, Amy's is doing? Are they adding just additional washer dryer space, or are they adding additional services?
Additional services, I think it's more for the dry cleaning service. Um, it's my understanding they're not adding more machines, so the water usage isn't significant. It's very limited. It's just to expand on the service she's already providing.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from Planning Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to Police Department. Chief.
Good evening. Uh, the third thing I'd like to bring up is that we did receive a pretty significant donation from um, a drive called Share the Love for our K nine program. So we, we got with our, uh, K nine handlers and are looking at how to best apply, uh, the funds that we received on that donation. Um, we ran the first round, get through an annual physical ability test now. Um, with the new, um, Maryland legislation, so we ran the first round back, and we did fine. Um. Uh, and finally, I wanted to also bring up that our, our detectives, we mentioned earlier some of the success with their investigations. I remain impressed with their ability to adjust as we take on new investigations, because they get knee-deep into some pretty, um, complicated investigations, and then we have something like the fire that comes up, or um, another crime that comes up, and, uh, they just adjust on the fly. They come in in their off-hours, they hit the ground running, and I have complete confidence in their ability to handle it, so it's a good feeling to know that, so. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Are there any questions for the chief?
Ms. Imholtz, it's not so much a question, it's a comment, and I agree with you, chief, but I think a big part of that is the, the spirit of decor that you've created within the department. These guys are coming in, doing those things and working, and that, those extra off-hours, putting in that extra effort in great part because of the morale that you've created through the work you've done. Um, I've been here a long time. I've seen it go up and down, and, and you've done an amazing job, uh, creating that environment in which these guys feel like, uh, they should be doing that, so kudos to you. I know you won't, you don't, you probably don't want the credit, and you're probably going to yell at me for even saying that later, but you deserve it, chief.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the chief? We'll round things out with the Housing Department. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. And good evening, again. I, uh, just wanted to mention a couple of things from housing. One is to let you know that we have two hundred and seventy-seven vouchers under lease as of the first of this month. We had sixteen vouchers that we were administering on behalf of another jurisdiction, and we have two participants that are living in other jurisdictions, namely Alut County and Baltimore County. I also want to take this opportunity, since it is the last meeting of the year, to wish the mayor and members of the common council, my colleagues and their respective families, a blessed holiday season filled with love and hope, and a new year filled with good health and prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any questions for the Housing Department? Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Imholtz. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Uh, when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that came to tonight's agenda, or any other situation. For a citizen who has not attended a public meeting, we invite you to send in your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. Uh, we'll now invite comments from anyone who is present this evening. Uh, and, uh, ask everyone to, uh, you know, who wants, which comment to please, again, share their address, uh, their name and address for this, for the city court's or address. Um, is anyone who'd like to be heard tonight?
Former mayor's report. What's that? So former, uh, no, formal, former mayor's report, on my word.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Anyone wishes to be heard? Then we'll say that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Uh, just note that we are canceling the next meeting, which will have been on December twenty-sixth, and our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, January ninth. New time, I wish everybody a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and a wonderful holiday season with your families. And that, without objection, we are adjourned.